Order. This meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local access channel eight and through the town website at www.eastham-ma.gov. We'll start with public information, first from the select board. Anyone have anything?
I don't think so.
All right, I have one quick thing from the Board of Library Trustees is accepting nominations for the library's Wall of Honor. The wall plaque honors an individual who has supported the library with exceptional service and dedication for a prolonged period of time. More information in the nomination form can be found by going to the library website at easthamlibrary.org or by stopping by the front desk at the library, and the deadline is April 6th for this year. And let me jump to my agenda because I don't have a paper one today. That's all right.
You can share my messy one.
All right. Shellfish grant changes to the access. So, do you want to start with the history of this, or should we have them?
Oh goodness, I think, I think Chris should give you the history, or Trent. Sorry.
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Trent Sullivan.
Hello. Chris Crowbar.
So, we've had the summer truck access program for how many years now?
Can you make sure that your microphones are on there?
Be a little green light, it'll come on.
A little green light?
Yeah, yeah, it's on.
Okay, great.
Let me speak into them.
Two years?
So, we've had this summer program for, this is what, the third year?
Going on a third year for the summer, yes.
And we've been noticing that the parking lot at First Encounter is usually not busy by the time that we're due off, for hours after, so we've asked to extend the weekday time to 10 o'clock, and we've asked that we be allowed to access the grants on weekends until 8:30. We, we met with Jackie Beebe and Stephanie a couple months ago, I think in December, actually, to discuss a lot of changes, which a lot of them were approved through the Conscom, and we, there were a few, few things that we asked for that we didn't really get a positive feedback from, and we met with the group of growers, and it was sort of decided that we want to push for the things that we asked for a little more strongly. And Jackie's sort of been really good working with Chris and myself, trying to find the middle road here, which I think is what we're here to do. That's all I have to say, pretty much. Chris, do you have anything to add?
Well, I know, me and Jackie spoke briefly. I'm not sure if you had any other updates. I know you said there might be some willingness to give us weekends, and I'm not sure if there was any, you know, progress on the weekday.
Times.
Times. But weekend, weekend days alone, like, would be a big help to a lot of us, especially for the guys who don't, you know, who do work other jobs Monday through Friday, the weekend is sometimes the only time that they can get to the farms. But I think weekends alone is a, is a step in the right direction, for sure, and I think that would, that would actually give us like fifteen additional days throughout the five mon, or, it's really like four months or three to four month periods, so. That being said, like, we're, we're completely okay with the weekends till 8:30, that's a, definitely a big step in the right direction, but, you know, as far as like going till 10, I don't, you know, that's what we're shooting for, but if there's anything, any sort of, you know, compromise, we'd be willing to, you know, hear that, and, yeah, I mean, we're just trying to open up a dialogue and...
We realize that 10 o'clock does cut it close in terms of when you really get that first wave of activity at the beach. It's usually 10:30 to 11:00 is when everybody really starts going to the beach. But, you know, on our end, even, you know, 9 o'clock, 9:30, it's still not that busy when we're coming off the beach. So, I understand the apprehension to allow us to cut it that much closer to the public access, for our access, but, you know, any little bit sort of helps, so if there's any sort of wiggle room, we'd appreciate it.
Thanks. And I think for the clarification of both the board, maybe the listening public and the growers, so, the board, select board cannot touch the order of conditions. As you guys know, you fought hard for these order of conditions, and it is 100% the Conscom. It's kind of interesting to see that they are loosening up on a couple of things, which is good, especially the reporting stuff is, but we've got a ways to go on that. But what they didn't say, which I think is very true, is that this program has gone really well, and I understand why the grant holders want more time. I do, but I also understand the anxiety of my staff that has to manage, you know, 13 beaches and all of that. And I know you're only one beach, but it, it, it factors in, right? So, so I think we're trying to grow this slowly over time and not wobble anyone's woo and try and keep the shellfish growers feeling like every year they're making a little progress. So, that's why I suggested that we try and, and split the difference and go with the weekends, because honestly, what we're really concerned about is July and August, and there's very little difference in July and August between a Tuesday and a Saturday. So, I think, I mean, it's probably a little busier on weekends, but not that much so that it would take them out.
Not, not before 8:30 in the morning, no.
Right, exactly. And I'd like to look at the, I know that they, they want the time and that that would give them more time to vacate the beach, and I think 9 o'clock probably is reasonable, but I would love it if we could wait on that until next year, because I think it would give Christine the time to really pay attention to that beach. We've got some pictures from you, but I, I want her to go through this season thinking, how could I manage it if it was 9:00 or 9:30? And have that, the opportunity to do that. So, that's, that's my piece. I think honestly, it's gone pretty well. The crab program is, is going really well. They've been very good and patient with it, and so far, this experiment has been, I think, very positive for both the town and the growers.
Right. Anyone from the board have any questions? Jamie?
Thanks. Yeah, I'm glad to hear that the program's going well for everybody, that's, that's great. And I guess my question would be, maybe, what, what would be the advantage to extending the time that you had out there from 8:30 to 9:30, say, or 9:00, or if it was to 10:00, you know, like, what are, what is it that improves for you guys?
Well, it would allow us, I mean, it's really not a whole lot of time. I think if we were allowed access until 10:00 AM, we would have about eight days throughout the summer program of extra access, as opposed to what we have now. So, having, you know, eight extra days doesn't seem like much, but, you know, spread out throughout the summer, which is, you know, sort of unpredictable, because you never really know when you're going to need to do what. And, you know, the, the nature of our business doesn't really allow us all the time in the world to access our, our, our work, and, you know, trying to make the most out of the situation, basically. And a lot of other people have other full-time jobs. I mean, Chris and myself and a few others are usually the only full-time people out there, so a lot of other people have other obligations, can only put so much time into it, so.
Yeah, and I noticed on the, and I know we can't touch the order of conditions, but there was something on there about two trucks going out, allowing two trucks, right, but not during summer?
Mm-hmm. I don't know, is that what they did?
Two vehicles, October through December, and then March and April.
That was a Conscom thing, I believe.
Oh, okay. Because I didn't know if having the time would kind of make up for the less.
Why January and February? I can't remember why that wasn't of concern to them.
Um, because they, they weren't really certain, or they were under the impression that we weren't really busy or active during those months.
Okay.
I think that was what it was. I think we...
Yeah, we figured that out.
Yeah.
At the last meeting.
So, maybe we need to correct that, just because there obviously is a lot of things you have to check on a grant at, at any time.
Storm, yeah, I mean, I would think.
Yeah, especially if there's something, some bad weather coming and a storm, and you want to pull everything off, two trucks would be pretty beneficial.
So, I do want to, our new shellfish constable, not to put you on the spot, but she is here this evening. I don't know if you guys have met her, Devin. But I, if you want to come up, Devin, and sit with Rich, I think there is an issue certainly with Vibrio that's of concern, and this helps that, right? Being able to access the grants faster and get on and off helps that.
Yeah, I had a question about that, actually, Jackie. Are they changing the regulation around that, around, like, how much time you have with that?
Devin, you want to introduce yourself?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to do this to you.
Hi. That's okay. Is it even on? Am I, okay. Okay, you can hear me.
You're good.
Okay, yeah, hi, I'm Devin. Nice to meet you all. All right, so Vibrio questions? Asking...
Are they changing the regulations?
Um, there is something that's changing, and I would have to look at it. I know that the DMF is changing a bunch of different things. I don't know if...
I think the time of icing is down to an hour.
Yeah, so...
Instead of two hours.
Yeah, I think that was one of the changes, and then there's a bunch of reporting changes, too, to like be aware of. It was in pretty fine print, so I would suggest reading it. But, yeah, basically, I mean, that was really the only thing for the Vibrio, was the hour icing. I think they knocked it down to two hours.
What was it originally?
I think it was two hours.
Two hours, so it cut their time in half.
Yeah.
So, that'll really put a damper on what we can and can't do with access.
Yeah, but I mean, I guess if you put it in a different perspective, like, if I were out there, because I have a grant, too, not in Eastham, but in Mallfleet, kind of spacing it out, so that, like, you have your hour timeframe, and then you can go back out again and, you know, continue doing it in like hour increments, that way you can kind of get the most out of, like, the Vibrio regulations. But, yeah, it kind of does, it's a bummer.
Yeah.
But, yeah, and then, like I said, the fine print with the whole reporting, they are starting to put, like, warnings and things on people's licenses if you don't report on time. That includes, like, paper and, like, online reporting, and they can actually, like, it can get to the point where there's so many warnings that you end up, like, not getting a propagation or a state permit if it's, like, too consistent. So, I would kind of read up on that, because it was in pretty fine print, so. But, yeah, that's what I have on, like, the state.
Thank you.
Aspect.
All right, Jerry?
When do we begin, what time of day do we begin collecting parking fees at First Encounter?
Nine. The beach opens at nine. The beach attendants get there, they like to clear, I mean, yeah.
Well, and, yeah, that, that, yeah, that's, that's interesting as we look at it, and I think your idea, Jackie, of having the rec department, rec and beach, look at kind of almost a survey of how the use is and the time early in the morning, to see if we can extend and what kind of, that we can be fine with the people wanting to go to the beach and those wanting to work on the, on the flats out there, that that would be a good thing to do.
And it is, Jerry, somewhat random. Like, I know when I was out there in the afternoon tides, you know, some days there'd be nobody on the beach in May or June, and then the next day, there'd be 50 kids from some school that got dropped off on the bus, running all over the place, so.
Yeah, it's, you know, the great thing is that this has worked well so far, and we're doing some little tweaks, and I think the idea of doing them smaller tweaks to test how this works, and then the next would, is best from the point of view of looking at the, you're not at opposite sides, but potential conflicting priorities of those vacationing on the beach and those working out on the flats. So, I, I think that that's, your idea is a good one, and I, and I think you're right, especially in the summer. Well, I'm retired, a weekend is the same as a regular day, but, but in the summer, when there are people vacationing, weekend and, and weekday days are the same, just depend upon the weather. Thank you.
Jamie?
Yeah, um, no, I do think that everyone's been doing a great job with the program. I guess my concern is that, you know, we've been doing so much work right around helping our residents be able to stay on the Cape, whether it's housing, or we're looking at, we're looking at, like, family support packages and all these things. This is another one of those things. I know it's not framed as housing, it's not framed as that, but it's framed as, you know, how someone makes a living to be able to stay on the Cape. And it's not only that, but it's also a Cape Cod tradition, which are disappearing at such a rapid rate that, to me, it's alarming. So that, when I look at something like this, I kind of, I see it a little differently than I would a traditional program, that you'd want to, you know, slowly move forward, whether it's a rec program or, like, something in the community, only because this does deal with someone's ability to make a living here. And with that, I guess, it makes me lean toward definitely weekends, and, I mean, I understand that it's an adjustment, even if you went from 8:30 to 9:00, right, it does offer a little bit of extra time, especially when we're cutting their ice time in half from the state, if that's coming down the line. I just feel like it's our responsibility to do as much as possible to help these folks, and I'm not saying that we push it to 10:00 right away, but I do think that 9:00 is a fair compromise, and, I mean, if that's a hard put, I, I just don't see how a half hour could be so much of a hard push that it's problematic, especially when we're talking about the days that are going to be out there are low tide.
Right, so it's not every day?
It's not every day, and low tide, I mean, that's not when people are, like, rushing to the beach on the bayside, you know? Maybe, like, an occasional beach walker and things like that in the morning, it's nice to go out low tide, but like, no little kid wants to show up at low tide and have it look like a desert, you know? Usually families are going when the tide's a little fuller, so I...
They're just trying to get parking, Jamie.
Oh, I know that, but I mean, at 9:00 AM...
That's all they're trying to do.
And looking at some of these photos, I mean, we're talking about 9:00 AM, and I've been there, I paddle there, I'm there in the mornings, I see what it looks like at 9:00 AM, and it's not, it's not full, like, it's not packed, like, there's like...
No one's saying that.
So, let me just ask, right now, it's 8:30 that you have to be completely off.
Yeah.
And then what happens then at 8:30? Do they put up some kind of a bar across the...
Yeah, I think there's a rope or a change, something like that.
So, nothing, there's no one standing there to make sure everybody's off or anything like that?
No, I don't think so.
Like, the last person kind of just maybe hangs the rope up.
I don't think we had any stragglers, so hopefully everybody got off.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the program's been working well, because everybody's been doing exactly what they're supposed to be doing, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm going to agree with Jamie, that I think, definitely the weekends, I think, but really, if they, they start collecting money at 9:00, that's when the gate opens.
Yep.
I can see putting it right up to that, so...
I mean, we're all pretty, pretty good about policing each other, too, it's, for the benefit of ourselves, you're right. So, we're usually on top of it, and everybody's been very well behaved for considering, you know?
No, I agree, I think everyone's been...
Suzanne, you have anything?
Um, I had a brief exchange with Karen from the Chair of Conservation Commission, and she said that it went pretty well, which I feel like is high praise.
It's high praise.
High praise, Karen. And she really appreciated all the work that the grant holders put into it, and then the shellfish department in following the orders of conditions, and that there is building trust between the growers and the commission, and so she seemed like the process went well, so that was...
That's really good.
Right, that's, seemed good to hear. Uh, yeah, and 9:00 seems okay unless Jackie says her staff really doesn't want to do it.
They, my staff really doesn't want to do it, and I'm going to be pushing them probably to do it at some point.
What do they do, what do they, what is their interaction in this process? Is it just like, I understand, like, it's just like one more thing sort of thing?
Clearing and setting, and it's mostly just, you know, having, having not to be worried about it is the, the big deal.
Uh, yeah.
But I would say, if you are inclined to go to 9:00, then go to 9:00. Maybe on the weekend days, could we keep it at 8:30, just for this year, to see?
How many low tides fall on a weekend? We have the tide charts in here.
I think you get some good, I think weekend time looked good when we looked at it.
Fifteen days, yes. If we're, have to be off at 8:30.
Well, what if we, what if we did 8:30?
It's pretty good.
You said the months you worried about were like July and August? Those were the months that were the most worrisome for...
Yeah, the end of June, the last week in June, the beach is open, and they close, you know, after Labor Day.
If we wanted to keep it 8:30 for July and August on weekends, and then keep it at 9:00 for the rest of the time, because I mean...
Yeah. What, instead of picking the months, make it 8:30 for the days that we collect for parking?
Well, that's the whole, that's the whole summer change.
And I think that's it, Jerry.
Let's not, no, 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 no. No, let's not get, we don't need new, we can't do new things, like, we can't do a new, we're used to the weekdays, weekend thing, so let's stick with that, because that's what the calendar is now. When we looked at the weekends, I liked the idea of weekends, because I thought they'd get more bang for their buck if we chose the weekend option, because there are some days they can't go out at all on the morning tide. So, but, but Jamie, your idea would be that we keep it at 8:30 just for July and August, and all other times, it's till 9:00.
July and August weekends, and then 9:00 AM during the weekday for the whole year.
Oh, okay.
Well, it's only a little bit of September and a little bit of June that really go.
You said Tuesday and a Saturday are the same in July and August.
I mean...
So, July and August, 8:00 AM.
But apparently not, if we had it set up so that they could only go out on weekends and, on weekdays and not weekends prior, right? There was a delineation.
I think, I think we should try to be consistent with the time.
I do, too, I think it's easier.
Say 9:00, weekdays, weekends, for the, the days that they have the time restriction, which is pretty much July and August with a week on either end, in September and June. And then, then see how it goes.
Okay.
If, if it's an issue on weekends that 9:00 is too late and they can't, then we can adjust it, but keep it at 9:00 across the board for now.
I think that's a lot easier than trying to do...
Change times?
Yes.
Okay, so that, there is no, it's just 9:00 AM across the board for the entire season.
Is there any current change or regulation for holiday, for July 4th or Labor Day, if they come on the weekday?
No holiday.
July 4th isn't necessarily a beach day, though, to be honest with you.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just asking whether there is currently...
Well, we previously, previously, we, we didn't have...
Holidays either.
Holidays.
It was weekends and holidays.
But I want to make note that even here on Memorial Day, we weren't given access Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or Monday, and then on July 4th...
I think it was one day, but July...
July 4th happened on a Tuesday, and we didn't have access Saturday, Sunday, Monday, or Tuesday.
Or Tuesday?
So, that was something I discussed with Jackie about having the growers possibly be a part of the scheduling process, so maybe we can come up with the tide charts and really figure out when we will be out there and what makes most sense, you know?
Well, do we, I don't necessarily, I'm just asking if there's anything prior to, I mean, I don't, if we're going to, which I agree with, allow on a weekend, we can try to make consistent, just have it go straight, straight through, look at the tests, see for a year, that would include Memorial Day, Labor Day, July 4th. I think those are the only holidays within that, that block, and we, we take a look at it, and we'll look at it again next year. Maybe you'll be back asking for more, or we may have to come in and say, nah, we think going to 9:00 was not the greatest idea, who knows? But that...
Are you suggesting that we do, are we able to access on holidays as well?
Hopefully.
Because I don't, personally, I don't think people are rushing down to the beach before 9:00.
Yeah, no, yes, my, my view was treat them all the same. A holiday is just a day. It's either on a weekend or it's on, on a weekday. It's the same as any other with the time, at least looking at it in the first, for this first year, and then hopefully staff will take a look at it, or we'll see if we hear some complaints in the middle. We may talk to you guys in the summer, which I really don't want to do, but that might happen.
But I think honestly, if we're going to do this, if you're going to do all days until 9:00 AM, that's a, I think that's a really big concession, then Christine should be able to weigh in if she has problems, please.
Before we vote?
No, 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 no. I'm saying if there are problems...
Oh, if their problems come in during the year and we...
We will pull them in.
Hopefully, we won't have to pull you in, but...
Just to make it clear that that's, yeah.
Just to make it clear, because I think it's a huge, you know, it's a, it's a big deal to her, whether you guys, you know, it's a big deal to you or not, and I, I've, I would love to, out of respect for her...
Absolutely.
You know, be able to call you back if there are issues. I'm sure there won't be.
There is one other thing that was brought up about if the beach is going to be closed for foul weather, if we'd be able to access the grants in that scenario.
I would think you would want to.
I know it's, it's sort of difficult to figure out how that would work logistically, but, I mean, if nobody's going to be there and we can go out, then it would be a waste of a day.
So, how is it now, that there's, if there's foul, foul weather, you can't go out?
I don't, I mean, I don't think we've run up against that situation yet.
They're on the same schedule, so they're on the same schedule. If it's foul weather, they have to be off the beach by 9:00, too. They can't stay till...
Oh, I see.
Right, oh, I see.
So, he was saying if the beach is closed for foul weather and it's noon?
Right, and it happens to be low tide.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Suzanne?
Has anyone come up with what you would want the definition of foul weather to be?
I would just say if the beach is going to be closed.
If they close, close the beach, does that happen often?
And there's no attendant?
Well, if it's raining, raining, like pouring rain, she won't put an attendant down there.
Right.
That doesn't mean that people won't show up, they're just not...
I mean, that's what I sort of meant, that, you know, if nobody's going to be there taking money, then we should be allowed to go out and access the farms, because if that, the reason why nobody's there ma, taking money is, you know, because nobody's coming to the beach to spend the money. So, if that, in theory, is the reason why nobody's there, then in theory, nobody should be there to get in our way or us in their way.
We work in the rain.
It's, it's a very, it's a very, like, rare circumstance, I know, but I'm just wondering if that's something that they might consider.
Ah, Christine says, what if the sun comes out? And the beach is never closed? I'm getting text messages now.
Yes, I understand, I'm sorry, Christine.
Yeah, I, I guess for that one, it seems too, like, subjective and mushy to define, and an attempt to define it and then monitor it kind of seems like more effort than it's possibly worth.
Because like you said, if, say it's 10:00 and it's, it's terrible, and you go out, and then 11:00, 11:30, the sun comes out, and it, it's mobbed, you know?
Well, what if there's, I mean, if there's an indefinite circumstance where the beach is going to be closed, like a hurricane's coming?
We don't want you out there.
Okay.
You can go out to get your stuff, you know, safe or secured, but...
I know there's already, like, protocols in place, but I just, we sort of assume that if the beach is not going to be utilized by the town, then that there's no harm in us being out there.
I think for, it's, that's not really our decision. I think it would have to be more the people down there managing it, so...
Yeah, and we, we've talked a lot about consistency today, and I think we're better off, at least in the first...
Just doing these changes.
First shot is to be consistent across the board, and we're looking at every day is a day, and every day's nine, well, we're looking at, right, every day is 9:00, and so that makes it very simple, and, and we're going to test it, see what happens, and we don't have to worry about, oh, is this foul weather? It's, maybe that's for next year or the year after, as we, we try and think about it. I mean, we're not be, I mean, I'm, I'm a guy who uses the beach, but I'm not being ant, you know, Jamie's right, you, you make a living here, or you, it helps you stay in Eastham, and we want you to stay in Eastham, but let's, let's be consistent, not add another layer of judgment, particularly of judgment in there.
I'm not, I'm not going to lose any sleep over what you're doing, so.
Don't lose any sleep.
Don't worry about it.
They're going in the right direction. I, I also think that, you know, this was really huge, and you guys supported it, because we hadn't ever had driving on the beach.
Right.
Ever, so it's a really big deal.
Generally, I'm not a fan, but...
Right?
It's a whole different animal.
So, you've kind of, you've, you've brought the tide over on your side, and we'd like to continue that momentum, and I think it will, I think it will.
Any more puns? It's a whole different animal.
So you've kind of, you've, you've brought the tide over on your side, and we'd like to continue that momentum, and I think it will, I think it will.
Any more puns?
No, I'm, I'm good, I'm good.
So should we vote?
Yeah, there was some, did you want to make a comment?
I'm good.
All right. I'm just going to let him, Craig, you want to come up and? Sorry.
Oh, it's all right.
He'll be quick.
Craig, see, in Orleans, Jamie, you made a comment about that this really doesn't, it does have to do with housing. It does. I, for one, I'm renting, I don't own a house. If I lose my rental, I lose my grant, because I'll never get another rental for what I'm paying in Orleans or Eastham. There is a, there is a.
Oh, I think that was her point, that this really, it's not directly housing under that umbrella, but it sure affects.
Being able to afford to live in Eastham is housing.
It's really tough. If I lose my stuff, I'm out, so I'm going to Texas.
No, you don't go to Texas, don't be ridiculous.
You can oyster in Texas, I've heard those oysters in the Gulf.
Those warm water oysters.
No, Craig, we're not going to let you go that easy.
No.
All right, Jamie, I'll entertain a motion.
I would like him to make a motion to extend hours of access to nine AM across the board.
I'll second that.
All right, any more discussion?
I, I was going to say, I just wanted to add that I think we do understand the value of what eight extra days or fifteen extra days does to your business. And so I was like, ooh, fifteen extra days, or ooh, eight extra days, like, that seems like a pretty big deal. But no, that was my only comment.
All right, we'll vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four to zeros.
Christine, please come see us.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
I hope not to see you this summer.
Next year, we'll work on the schedule together.
We'll see you next year.
Oh, we're losing our audience.
I want to stay for the town meeting warrant.
I think it's still the same.
Yeah.
The warrant, though.
Yeah, they don't want to do the warrant.
Nice to meet you, I met you one day down it with the.
That's why I went.
I think it was your first day.
How long have you been here, is it three weeks yet?
Yeah, it's been three weeks.
Three whole weeks.
Welcome.
We haven't scared your way yet, huh?
No, no, she's tough.
Thank you.
Thanks, Devin.
All right, we'll move on to administrative matters, the Nosett Regional High School Agreement.
Okay.
Jerry, Jerry, sure.
All right.
This is why we have Jerry on the board.
Our lawyer. Our resident lawyer.
Okay, I have a couple of thoughts on, on the draft that we, we had. And the first one, and I'll just go through on the pages we had, and we have one, pages one to thirteen. So it isn't in the agenda, because those are the odd ones.
So it's page.
I think she added, just added it.
Oh, she added, okay, great.
So page one.
So page two of the agreement, holding office vacant slash vacancies. One of the things that is here that it, if I'm on the committee, my term ends when the next person is elected and is sworn into office and so forth. And then they have a whole series of defining what vacancies are. But we currently, at least as of the last meeting, have an issue that's not written as a vacancy. That means, that would be no one's running for the seat in our town, and that's not viewed as a vacancy. And if things are called a vacancy, we have, we being the select board, have the ability to appoint someone until the next election. So we always have someone there. So I think what.
Wouldn't the day after the person's term runs out constitute a vacancy?
No, it, no, because it's defined, with the way it's defined in here, a vacancy is, in the event, any newly elected or appointed member shall fail to qualify due to death, declination to serve, or refusal to take the oath of office. Such failure shall be a vacancy hereunder. But it's not that no one ran.
But you don't, you have someone not taking the oath of office.
You, you, you do, but you've got to go back and, and flip. I'm trying to make it so that we, we, the select board. Can appoint someone, or not just us, but Wealth Lead and.
Right, right.
Orleans and Brewster can appoint it.
Yeah, but how would that work?
We would just appoint them till the next election.
We would appoint someone.
Four boards would get together and appoint somebody?
From our town.
No, it's just our town.
So this would just be the elementary school?
No, no.
The regional.
We have a regional.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
One of our regional seats, we have two.
Okay.
And so we would, we would, so I would like to see a point in there defining what a vacancy or, including it in a definition of a vacancy is no one ran for the position. Sadly, that's a.
It happens.
Something that we have to, to deal with, and that's not done there, okay? Next, we go to.
I don't have it. It's on page two, which I have in a different thing.
Okay, page two. Just to follow up with what you just said, Jerry, is that something we can do, that we can add to that?
Well, this is a draft, and we want to, we want to suggest this is.
This is a suggestion to add to that.
Suggestion to add.
You can make suggestions, we can't guarantee that they'll make it.
Can't guarantee anything, right.
There it is here, for the vacancy.
Perfect, see.
Okay, then, if you go to page three of the draft agreement. It's, it would be section one, I don't know what the letter is, what's the letter down there?
Oh, here, you want this?
This one, no, this, it's three.
Section one F, two.
Oh, it was on, it was on page two.
F two, on page three. I have no idea, and someone, and I'll have to work with somebody, but in reading this, just to let you, you all know, what it means to apportion.
Oh, I know.
The, the votes, the, the weight of the votes that Eastham has, and the weight of the votes that Brewster has, Orleans and so forth. They talk about it's nearly equal to one, and you can't have a deviation within ten percent, and it makes no sense. Currently, Brewster votes are equal to one, so they had four votes. Orleans has three people, their vote weight is point eight, so they have two point four votes. We have two, and our weight is one point one, so we have two point two votes. And Wealth Lead has.
One point one each.
One point one each, so it's two point two, and Wealth Lead has one with a one point four weighting, which adds up to ten. So there are ten votes. If you, and it's based upon the population of the pop, the actual residential population of each town. On the last census, so every ten years you have to look at. It just doesn't make any sense, and I think someone asked it.
It's based on the residential population, not the number of students in school.
Correct, correct. And that's fine, I just don't understand that, I'll have to talk with somebody, maybe somebody can come talk to me.
But it should be based on the number of students, not on the residential population.
Well, not necessarily, but maybe representation should more, the number should really equal those numbers and not have them weighted. You know what I mean, have it.
Oh, change the representative, well, you can do that.
Because you look at the difference between Orleans and Eastham, it's less than ten percent between, but yet they have a fifty percent gap. Now, I get the weighting kind of brings that closer, but it's still not.
Right, because we get two point two and they get two point four.
They only actually have, like, six hundred more people than we do now.
Yeah, but it, that's, but that's, that's true, and I don't know how, but maybe we want to have a discussion on section one F two.
It becomes problematic if you have additional representation, regardless of the weight, you still have another person potentially from another town.
Yeah.
Representing that.
Who can sway the committee?
Yeah, how it goes. Then we go to number three.
Oh, boy.
Which is the quorum. A quorum is fifty percent plus one. With the weighted votes.
Oh, boy.
Brewster and one other town can have a meeting, call, get, have a meeting with a quorum, and the other two towns are not represented. Edit.
What about that two thirds, though?
That's two thirds for certain.
Certain topics.
For certain topics, we'll talk on that, I'm just talking about a quorum. And I, I think that we should have, you can't have a quorum unless.
Each town.
Each town is represented, but there's a problem with that, which I will explain. It means that one town can have a veto, which, I, I'm, I'm not dumping on Wealth Lead, but you only have one person. So Wealth Lead doesn't like what's going on, the Wealth Lead representative never shows up, you can never have a quorum. So you have to have a system that they, if they miss a regularly scheduled meeting, there's no quorum if there's no town. But that same town can't be absent the next one to stop a quorum, there's got to be some way to write it. But I really, I've been on a com, I worked on a commission where the quorum was, was an absolute number of three out of five. Two vacancies, the one commissioner didn't show up, then you could never have a meeting. But it's also, I don't want a situation, I mean, I don't think I want a situation where Brewster, Orleans, and Wealth Lead are there. Eastham, the two are sick or not there or something, now with Zoom meetings, it probably won't happen as much. Aren't there, and we're not representative meeting, and they have votes. They can even have a two thirds vote, because we only have. So, so that's, so I think the quorum thing needs to have it, that every town, I've, I've seen agreements where every town has to be represented in order to have a quorum.
I feel like that makes sense, too, yeah, like.
Except for, if you only have one person.
If you have one person they're missing, that's, it's.
That's the problem.
It's, it's, it's the veto problem, which is why you have to do, you can miss a meeting, okay, you have the regularly scheduled meeting today, we can't have it. We have another on March twenty-fifth.
How about at least three towns have to be represented?
Well, you could have at least three towns, but that would still knock one out, I'm not necessarily, that's a vast improvement, let me put it that way.
Yeah, because I, I guess what I would be worried about is if Wealth Lead only has one person, and that one person gets sick or can't come, or, you know, then you're, you don't have a quorum.
You can't do any work, and that's, that, and that's a problem, yeah. And so I think that maybe you do three, so that, all right, now.
You could require participation, Jerry, or a certain quantum present, right? So I don't know what that number might be, but if eighty percent of the committee shows up, regardless of, you know, one town not showing up.
Right.
Something like that.
Well, it's still fifty percent, but I think with Jack, Jackie's compromise, it may be worth looking at, but they have, at least three towns have to be represented. Because Brewster and any town there makes fifty percent, so they can go forward, and you have two towns missing. And so, so I think we'd.
And you could have, could you have one from each town? One from each town would make a quorum, right?
Yep.
Four?
Well, Brewster has four.
You need five.
Yeah.
Or, let's see, what is it? One point four, one.
So you need five, right?
One point four, one, one point one, and point eight, yeah, you'd need five people, you couldn't have four people. From each town, yeah, okay, so that's where I'm on the quorum. All right. Section two, which is still on the same page, and this is Jerry, this is not something that is, and you, you guys can really disagree with me on this. The regional school district schools shall consist of facilities to serve the needs of grade six through twelve. I, that means if we decide at some point, now listen. If we decide we have a brand-new high school, and we want to move seventh and eighth grade over there, move the sixth grades back to elementary school, you have to change the whole agreement. What I would like to do, what I propose, is that it can change it with, that that six through twelve can be changed without being viewed as an amendment. It's that stated up here in, which is stated in another section here.
But.
Go ahead.
Wouldn't that require a whole, a fairly significant restructuring anyway if we decided to do that? And maybe you would want it.
Yeah, because all the towns, then, you can't just have one town pull their sixth graders.
Right, they got to pull them all in, it has to be an agreement, but you have to go through.
This process, which is like changing the charter.
Oh, okay, so that was my next question is how.
All the towns would have to agree to make the change.
Oh, I didn't realize that, amending this.
So that you give some.
That's why we haven't done it in forty years, or.
So you have some, you have some flex, you, you, you're giving ourselves, you're giving the committee, the regional school system, and the towns a little bit more flexibility. It's easier to change, to make that change. It has nothing to do with today, it could stay written the way it is now, and it won't affect.
But really, even with the charter, we can go back any year, it doesn't have to be the ten year that our charters do, and make changes if we want. It does have to go to town meeting, and this obviously would have to go.
To four.
I don't think you'd have to.
Doesn't this have to go to the commissioner? This has to go to the commissioner if you make this change as well.
And each town meeting.
Each town meeting plus the commissioner of the state.
Yes.
Whereas if you change it, sort of the way I do, it only has to go through town meetings, and we don't have to worry about the state of Mass, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
But the same with the charter, the common, the charter has to be approved also at the state level.
But if he's saying if we reward.
If we reward this, you don't have, we can.
Wouldn't have to.
We can send the sixth graders back to the elementary school and the others up, or even make it seven, eight, nine, middle school, junior high, and ten, eleven, twelve. All kinds of different changes. Gives it, gives the ability to make some changes.
So you change it now, and then it.
It doesn't change.
Well, you'd all have to agree, right, there'd be a process.
Some provision that would allow for flexibility in that, with the approval of each of the select boards of each of the member towns.
Yeah. There's a point in.
Would add a line to it, or a section A or something to that. That would create that clause, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and there's, there's a provision just before, and I suddenly can't find it, where there is a way to make a change.
Even page.
Without it looking at.
I'm sorry.
Anyway, there you go, so we'll just mark that as something that.
I.
Go ahead, Suzanne.
I feel like, like I want that flexibility for us and whatnot, but I feel like in the event that that happens, other parts of this are going to have to. Like, something else is going to have to be revisited in a fairly major way, right? If we decide to absorb a sixth grade into our elementary school.
Oh, that's a major change for each town.
It just seems like, I don't know.
But it's saying that if we, if the towns underwent that process, they would not find a hang-up in this document that would prevent it from moving forward.
Okay, and it wouldn't just be the whole rest of the document, too, need to be?
No, no, because there are a few spots, and I've tried to catch them, where we say six to twelve, and you just say.
Right.
Per, per section two.
Oh, okay.
Instead of that, is the way to do it.
It's kind of one of those things where, like, if, for some reason, all the towns did go through this process and did all this work, they would hit a wall here. And that could be problematic, whereas this is saying, we are giving you the option to go to a vote to change this clause without having to go through the whole.
I like it, I think it would still be hard enough.
It would still be, yeah, right?
Very difficult.
I think it should be hard.
I agree with you, because that language is restrictive.
Yes, it should be difficult.
It should be difficult, yeah.
But I just, I'm not, the state seems to always mess up things that we want to do stuff. Anyway, I'll just, that's why I brought that up.
All right.
Then if you go to page four.
Oh, good, we're moving along to four.
Yeah, well, we're, we're moving quickly.
It's only fifteen.
Right on the top of page four, this is a silly question, it says that in the general area, the schools will be located in the general area within a five-mile radius from the intersection of Mid-Cape Highway.
Oh, my God.
Route six.
And Sammaset Road in Eastham. Is Route six called Mid-Cape Highway out here?
Yeah.
Oh, it is, then we, it's good, fine, I'm done.
General area of.
With that one. Done with that one. I just didn't think that, I thought the midcape was just ended at the circle, but that's okay.
Route six, yeah, we could change that to.
Just change it to Route six, Route six and Sammaset in high, in, in Eastham, just take out mid, midcape and the parents.
All right, I got the whole document.
All right.
Oh, good, yeah.
Then if, if we go down to section four, appointment and payment of cost by the district. After the new B, after the first sentence, there is a whole paragraph, I guess, starting with limitation, lowercase L. And as you go down to the next one, it's in, under C, it looks like, including without limitation. It seems to me, and then the next one's ratio, I don't know where they, what they apply to. They're talking about capital costs and operating costs, and I think the first one, limitation, applies only to capital costs. And I don't know where the including goes, the ratio of the member to a town and the rolling average.
And that's where it says six to twelve.
The six to twelve, you'd have to put, what you'd, you'd have to cite section two for that if you want to.
Right, where it says six to twelve, yep.
Yeah, students, or till, students eligible in grades listed in section two. So those don't seem to be sent. So those don't seem to be sentences or there's no, there's no colon.
Seems to be something missing because the numbers, the letters are even missing.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't follow.
Yeah, there's a comma and a lowercase including, like that doesn't, it's like something's missing.
And what is, where's it work? So that's it. And then when you go to page five, the only things are grade six to twelve are, are in there four times.
So refer to section two.
You can refer to section two. Transportation was fine. If you go to page seven, section seven, which is withdrawal, that wings when Eastham wants to withdraw or somebody. I just wanted to point out that the committee would set up an amendment to this agreement, the, the,
School committee?
The school committee.
On the school committee.
And when they set up the, it goes, it's automatically, the select board would have to put it on,
Their agenda.
On the warrants, not on, would automatically be put, it would be similar to, the way I read it, similar to a petitioned article. I don't know if we want that or not, I just brought that up. I mean, I don't want to fight with the committee, somebody wants to leave, I mean, however it works, but.
Well, it's kind of huge though. Someone, if a town, if a town wants to leave, right? That's what we're talking about?
Yes, if a town wants to leave, it's huge.
So that would have huge economic consequences on the three remaining towns.
There is a significant, in the withdrawal, there's a significant amount of, they have to pay the indebtedness, still paying the capital indebtedness and so forth.
Okay.
So it's, there's a very, I looked at this, if you,
It's highly unlikely.
If I were saying, if I want, if I were, Eastham, we wanted to leave, I look at this and say, you don't want to leave.
Right. You should have talked to the Brexit people.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
But that's there, so, just pointing out that, that, if the, when the committee comes together with changing it, it has to go on the warrant without the approval of any of the select boards of the course of the towns. But yeah, even the withdrawal, Jackie even says they have to pay OPEB and, and retirement stuff as well for those leaving. Okay? So it's, it's, it's pretty, it's fairly restrictive.
And would it go on every town?
Every town would sign this.
Every town's town meeting would have to vote for the, for them to,
Yes, yes. And it would have to be approved by all four towns. The town leaving, the town leaving and the three staying.
Would have to really,
Yeah, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a majority, it would be each town would have to approve, the way it's written. And you go to page nine. Right on the top, they've got a, things as lowercase on, on the committee from withdrawing talents, I don't know where it, where that connects.
Right, exactly. It's another one of those disconnected, tangling.
So I just don't know where it goes. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, I just don't know where it connects.
It's not finished though.
Page nine, the top of page nine, the second paragraph?
Yeah.
It just starts mid-sentence.
Right there Jackie, yeah.
Yeah, I got it here.
Oh, okay, on the committee from,
Yeah, and it's, it is a period after five million and then it's just sitting there.
Weird, okay.
Okay.
Section.
Then if you go down to, I'm still on nine, on page, section eight, C is in Charles. They have in the first sentence, this is just, this is one of the few I caught up. They have a period with a capital except that's not a sentence, so it should be a comma after the amendment and lowercase e for except.
You really read this thoroughly, Jerry?
Yeah.
She took your hand.
Well, I just, I just caught, yeah, yeah, listen.
You understood.
Suzanne wrote to me, I'm depending upon, my eyes are on you. I'm looking at you, Jerry, and so, okay, I got this, this weight on me.
That's what happens, don't know what data is.
We don't know what data is. It's like, oh man. On page ten, under budget, section nine. Right near the end of A, they have, that, they have to send something to the chairman of the select board. Every place else it's chairperson, they just missed it. And then at the, right at the end of that, section A, there's and at least, and that should be,
You don't need,
That should be deleted as well.
Got to extend that, strike out.
All right, then we go to page eleven. We're still on section nine, under,
F?
Under F, I think, new F, talks about that, that to, the annual budget has to be approved by two thirds of the member towns by an affirmative vote of the appropriating authorities for such member towns. Is that the town meeting? It's not defined who the appropriate,
Yeah, so two,
Authorities, I think it's gotta be the, and it's in our town, this is something that
Right, and so two thirds of the towns.
Two thirds of the town have to vote in favor of the school budget.
Doesn't, doesn't matter.
No, 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 there's, well, if it,
Right?
Except the appropriating authorities, that would be the town meeting. So you would need a two thirds vote of the town to approve the school budget.
No, of all towns.
No, of all towns, of the member towns. So two, basically two out of three towns.
Would it be a quantitative or would it be a town?
Right, you know what I mean?
No, it says two thirds of the member towns by an affirmative vote. So yeah, you would have to have three towns.
You'd have to have three.
Is this an overall vote or is this numbers of total, in total?
This would be each town, so each town meeting.
Just the towns as a whole.
Okay, not a, I understand it, like it's, I just wanted to make sure, we're not waiting.
Because I know, I know that has come up before where people say, oh, what if Brewster votes no? Well, guess what? If the other ones vote yes, it's done.
Well, that's why,
And they gotta scramble.
That's, that's why it's difficult, for example, at town meeting, if you had a disagreement with the school budget, you really have a yes, no vote, but if we voted no in Eastham and everybody voted yes, we wouldn't have no, it would be worse.
Oh, no, we would have to.
We wouldn't have the appropriations. We'd have to find the money elsewhere, have a special meeting. So it's difficult.
Jerry, in your reading of this, on that section that you're referencing?
Yes.
It doesn't say what happens if there is not a two thirds vote. And the reason I mentioned, and I just want to make sure you, that you agree to that, agree that that's what it doesn't say because,
It doesn't say what happens if a town votes, if two towns vote no.
So then you have a dead end. The only option is to keep voting until you get two thirds. In other communities, they have provisions for regional district,
A regional district vote, well, okay, that's a good point.
Which is, all four towns, it's a meeting hosted by the district, which all four towns can attend, but if one town chooses to not attend because they don't like it, the other towns can outvote them.
Yeah, so, well, that's an interesting point, Rich, there is nothing, if two towns vote no, you have to, yep, what next? They, they go back to the drawing board to try again. So there's no other provision. That might be something that's worth discussing.
No, it'd be, it's not two, if one town votes no.
If one town votes no, it's two thirds, you have it. The budget's approved.
But if it doesn't pass, say there's two towns that vote,
You need two towns to vote no.
If two towns vote no, there's nothing that says there, you could add that if you wanted to.
So is that what it is currently? If two towns vote no?
If two towns vote no, everybody's got to go back to the drawing. The, the school committee has to come up with another budget or meet, meet the needs and it comes through the whole process again and,
I mean, I think honestly, that's, from a municipal perspective, that's probably preferable because in an arrangement where you provide for a district wide meeting in lieu of each individual town, then the town that's got the problems,
Right.
loses representation, especially if you're a small town.
Well, yeah, if, if Eastham and, and Wealthlead disagreed, but Orleans and Brewster, their numbers, if they, their population's a little higher, they could, they could win. Anyway, I just, just raised that one. These, and the only other one I have is on page eleven. Section ten, A, it says that the districts shall accept all students resigned in any member town of the district who have completed the fifth grade. And I would change that to the, if we, if you agree with pulling out six to twelve and leave the, the opening to the, the grade prior to the grades outlined in section two. So in other words,
Because if we changed it.
It could be, you have to, if, 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 if you,
It could be the sixth grade.
Could be, it could be complete the sixth grade, or if you do something different, it could be completing the fourth grade, you know, they're, however it works. Because I came from a town that changed elementary schools one to, one to three and then four to six was in another school and then seven and eight in another and so forth.
D Y just did that, yeah.
They, did they? Yeah. So you can make lots of different changes. And, and the fact that our elementary schools are, you know, outside the district in that sense, you have that for, and that's, that's what I got from my quick reading and thank you for putting up with me.
No, this was great, Jerry, this was so helpful.
And I, did you look at the finance committee recommendation that the budget's done earlier?
I, I did, but I talked to Mary and she said that they had a different document, so I can't, there's no way to cross-reference what the finance committee,
Oh, they just made a list of recommendations.
But they did,
But didn't say, I don't know where it is.
Paragraph six, item C, uh,
Yeah, they didn't give me, that's all they gave me.
But I, I was going to ask you the question about the three year rolling average.
Oh, yeah.
Applied to all the, not just the, this limited share for student, but also the capital. Did, do you find out any, did they address that yet or?
It's my understanding that they have agreed to the three year rolling average.
For every,
For capital also. Oh, that's great. All right.
May I offer my two cents?
I did give Jerry my notes.
Here, Mary, here, here you go, Mary.
Could, yeah.
Let me get this back.
Rich offer his two cents.
Rich is gonna give us his.
I haven't done the in-depth analysis that Jerry has, but I do have a few things from my past experiences that I just want to raise. So as we go through this process, the finance committee and the select board can consider it and give the school committee their feedback. You just referenced the apportionment of cost, capital and debt on three year rolling average, which is typical for on a, for participation percentage, whether it's an average or most recent. The one thing that occurs, that's been discussed in other communities that have gone through revisions of school agreements, is there is a base amount that, of a value of being in the district, whether or not, you know, I'm saying, so in other words, you need to have a middle school. What's the difference whether you have three people attending or thirty people attending? You have a middle school that you can send your three or your thirty students. And so perhaps with there's declining enrollments and limited enrollments and our four participants, that proportion might not be appropriate. So sometimes, you know, there's been some discussions and other agreements and I don't know that any that have passed us through yet, but we could find out. You know, is there a base level? Just, and I'm just making up a number, but for example, if your debt service costs for a high school or a middle school, and you're one fourth participant, maybe you gotta provide for half of the debt service twenty-five percent, and then the other half is based on an apportionment, something like that.
So that you never drop below.
Because you gotta participate, you gotta have a high school and a middle school to go to.
We have to have a special needs department. We have to have high schools that'll,
It's like our water bill.
So it's almost like a minimum participation.
Right.
So you would have, you would have a minimum, similar to the alternative minimum tax kind of thing.
Or the water bill.
Our water bill, yeah.
Water bill, you have a nine, now it's a hundred.
Fat fee and then you have usage and,
Yeah.
No, I think that makes sense.
That's a bit far afield from what I'm sure they've discussed. And I don't know how far along they think they are in this, but this is our first draft of reviewing it and so I thought I'd offer that up at this time.
How if we could just all get the same copy?
So, so you have any, to give them any advice, free advice worth what they paid for, but advice on how to set that minimum or what you're looking at on the minimum?
I could come up with all kinds of calculations, but at the end of the day, it becomes more of a political negotiation. So what's the point, right?
All right.
But just occurs that there ought to be a minimum to participate because you have the facility available to you.
Right, okay. I, I, yes, that's a good point.
And that could be rolled out for debt service, that could be rolled out for capital, and perhaps you could even say there's a minimum amount of operating budget that has to be there for you to, you know, that gets, you could go as far as you want with it.
And, and that would help kind of stabilize from year to year too, right? Because the town would be like, okay, well, we know it's gonna be this amount, the base amount, and then, then you have the three year rolling average on top of that, so it would probably be less bumpy still.
Good point.
And the other point, major point, there's lots of little nits, but of the major points, um, they go, spend some time talking about apportionment of costs based on participation, which is in our regional agreement, or on the statutory method provided by law. And honestly, I'm not, you know, I'm not a lawyer on this, but I don't understand why that has to be in the agreement because that is already existing state law. So why are you putting things that might end up changing between times this gets,
Oh, I understand.
So just, you know, you're gonna apportion it based, you, you've always been the option of, the regional agreement has a default method and then the state law has the required method unless you elect to use the,
All right, so you would just, in other words, you, you would have it just cite the statute or the statutory thing in mass general law, blah, 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 that's it.
Or the, or in accordance with this regional agreement if all towns agree.
Right.
Which is what we do now.
That makes sense. Don't rewrite something that could change. That you have no control over it changing.
The other part that goes into this is it does give the school committee the discretion now to say which method they want to use. And that really, in my opinion, is not their discretion, it's the town's discretion. I mean, they can have a recommendation, of course, but we're the ones funding it and paying the bill.
And is that in this?
At least we should decide how.
Is that not included? Is that?
No, it's new powers that the school committee has to say which method they want to use.
That's included in this document.
Yes. And that's actually what's happened for this fiscal year. They've told us that they want to use the statutory method, which will be the first time
In fifty years.
In the history of our district of doing that.
Randomly without telling us.
Which I can just tell you from experience in other districts, as soon as that Pandora's box is opened, it will never be closed because there will always be someone that's winning on one method and someone that's losing on a method, and they will always vote their interest. And so it's, so, you know, it's a, becomes a political issue and it makes discussing of the budgets for the schools,
Right.
at the expense of town side of cost because we have no choice but to fund their assessment once it passes, that much more difficult.
Well, and, and the way the, this draft is written, every, all four towns have to approve the alternative method each fiscal year.
That's always been the case.
So if one says no, you're all, you're back to the statutory method?
And that's always been the case. And we've, all four towns have always had either as part of their motion or as a separate,
Yeah, no, no, I, I,
The entire history until this year.
Why?
So which is fine if a town, if a town agrees to, determines that they don't want to fund the alternative method, that's the prerogative. I just think it ought to come from that other town, not from the school committee telling us all that we ought to do it.
So,
They said it was because they had the power to do it.
Why, that's a bad reason.
Honestly, that's what is in writing.
Just because you can't doesn't mean you should. And so I'm wondering, so we just had this discussion with some edits and what we would like to see in it. And do we think the school committee is agreeable to trying to get those in?
We won't know until we send it to them.
Well, I just meant like conceptually.
Oh, are they asking for our input?
To incorporate it?
Yes, I think they did. Yes, they did.
Okay.
So,
Well, don't forget, at the end of the day, all the towns need to a hundred percent agree to change this agreement.
Right, but there will, we've had on the warrant, and each of the four towns have a warrant to use the rate, the alternative method, which is the ratio of students.
Right.
They're proposing for this year not to have that.
They've made a decision.
No, it's not proposing.
They've demanded, so typically what happens is when you get, participate in a regional school district, you get an assessment, assessment, you know, budget summary page saying, here's your assessment on the regional school district methodology, alternative, or based on the statutory method. And then the towns vote, whatever they want to vote. In this case, we've been assigned, sent a budgetary, budget summary page with an assessment clearly marked based on the statutory method as voted by the school committee.
Okay.
My brain is slow right now, so.
If it was ever a school committee decision, why would every town ever have the option to recommend the other method, to vote the other method, you know what I mean?
So what is that change for us then? The alternative is to do ratio of students? The statute, is it just, The statute, is it just?
The just.
Statutory method contemplates what's called the foundation budget and establishes minimum costs. And you gotta figure out, each town's net school, there's, it's a complicated formula. The end of the day, and then anything excess costs over that foundation budget is based on the region agreement, which is proportional. But it's only on the excess, not on everything. So in our case, so, you know, we are a, not a beneficiary this year. And, which is fine, it doesn't bother me because I know how this goes. And in other years, I'm sure we were beneficiaries. And this is kind of my point, is you end up having this ongoing back and forth where no town will ever give anything because they got screwed five years ago type of thing. Excuse my language. But that's what happens. And so for this year, it's about a fifty-one thousand dollar additional cost to Eastham and a fifty-one thousand dollar savings to Brewster. And the other two towns are essentially, you know, break even. You know, plus for mine is a few bucks.
That's for the, this coming budget?
Yes.
They decided to do that just recently?
Cause this current budget wasn't complicated enough.
Right. Okay. So that was, that was kind of my feeling. I was like, now? Now is the time?
You know, not to be too accusatory, especially in public, but a lot of these changes are weighted to a large participant. And we all know what, who the largest participant is. And, you know, I think we need to be cognizant of these changes that are all redlined and marked for improvement that aren't necessarily beneficial to our interests or a smaller town's interest.
And I'm not honestly trying to throw the school committee under the bus for the right to make the decision, but it was not discussed with any of us. We didn't even, the town managers and the finance directors didn't even get an email saying, we're considering changing the formula this year. So it was a very odd blind side to get a budget based on a formula that we literally have never used.
Was it on their agenda to do it?
It must have been.
It happened at one of their meetings where they discussed it and voted on it at the, at that meeting. And that, that was when they determined that they wouldn't use the alternative method, that they would use the statutory method.
Yeah, that vote, it's a little odd and, you know, I get it. But they go through and they do their budget without regard to assessment, really.
Yeah.
You know, their budget is their budget. And then when the budget's set, then they figure out how you're gonna assess that amount of budget. And that, you know, the chips fall where they may at that point, except for this decision point of which methodology you want to use, which historically has always been left to the towns to vote as the regional school agreement. In this type case, they inserted themselves and said, here's our budget, we approve our budget, and we're approving this assessment methodology.
I, I'd just like to add another thing that when, we've been using the alternative method all along. So this is the first year that we're using the statutory method, which is what they voted on. But the other thing that we're not applying this year and would most likely be applying next year will be the three-year rolling average.
Right.
So we've changed from alternative to statutory for this year. And the plan is to go to the three-year rolling average starting next year.
So it's gonna change.
Oh, the year after, probably.
And how does that?
Whenever, you know, we can't be approved by this year.
Yeah, I can't imagine that the three-year rolling average, we did have increased participation this year. But if we had an average, you know, it would, the difference is negligible on that. It's the.
But if we, if we use the statutory method, why do you need the three-year rolling average?
Because there's still a piece, to the extent each town funds its education services in excess of its net school spending requirement, that excess amount has to be apportioned on some basis. And so we can do it on the basis of a participation, which could be determined each year or on an average. But that, at this point, now becomes very minor element of it, right?
I, I, I was hoping that we were looking to get some consistency for our budgeting year to year in doing this. And so I guess my understanding is that having the option to choose how they wanna assess it ye, on a yearly basis, kind of just throws a wrench in it and then adds this level of like unpredictability that I don't really wanna, I don't want staff to have to field that. I don't want to have to wonder every year which is gonna be used. And the budget's already such a contentious issue of when they get it to us and the form it's in and so on and so forth. So I don't, I'm not.
The altern, the two methods is never gonna go away, whether the school committee tells us what they want to use or whether we have to vote it as each of four towns. So that doesn't solve that.
Well, I guess.
But I think what it does is it, in this agreement, as drafted, as one of the changes, it gives them the power to tell you which one they get. And that, I don't think.
Right.
Absent that, I don't think they have.
Jerry, it's like when Jerry's helps.
I missed it.
Where, where is it, where is it addressed?
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm getting at, is that I would be uncomfortable with the school committee
Having the.
Have, to just tell us
Yeah.
with, what it's gonna be.
The annual decision.
Um, and I'm still a little fuzzy on what
Why?
the alternative is to make that decision if the school committee doesn't have that power.
You're right. I missed it. It's the top of page five.
Yeah.
And she found it, she's.
That's the first partial paragraph, the last sentence.
Starts on page four, it goes to page five, and it says it's the school committee that will determine.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's just the last, that last sentence, you should, that should be deleted.
Based on the alternative.
The committee will have the option to vote the alternative assessment or statutory? Um, what's the, is there an alternative?
Yeah, the alternative.
Just don't give them the power to tell you.
Then, then who makes the decision?
The default is each town decides.
Oh.
I suspect, I, I might be able to shed some light on some of this discussion.
Do you mind coming up to Mike Peter, just, you guys can both come up here if you want.
You can both, yeah.
And Mary also. But I've been to all, I went to all the subcommittee meetings on the revising the regional agreement. And I've been to a lot of the school committee meetings this year too. So the reason the regional agreement got opened up, and maybe you already know this, is because Brewster suggested the three-year rolling average.
Yes, yeah.
Once they opened it up, and it's twenty, twenty years or more old, they found that a lot of it didn't comply with current DESI rules, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The three-year rolling average, I don't even think is in, is in the draft that you just read through. All the other changes in that, all the redlines were put in by the council, it was hired by the district council, that went through to try to make the agreement comply with state law. So I suspect that the school committee does have the power to vote alternative, alternate versus statutory method. Because.
Then why would they add it to the agreement that they have it if they already had it?
No, no. They added it because it wasn't in the agreement and it should be in there is, is what I suspect. Because.
But if it's in state law, what?
You know, I, you know, I'm not an attorney, but I disagree. That's why, that's the problem I have with a lot of this language, Peter, is they're adding language that is already in state law. Why would you add that? It's not necessary if state law provides for it.
Well, I guess
But if state law changes, they retain the.
So if someone, someone wanted to look up the, what the agreement was, they could find out who's, who's in charge of deciding the, the formula.
But even if you're in charge of deciding the formula?
Right.
I mean, every year we have many budget meetings with the school, where the school superintendent and the school finance director meets with the finance director and the town managers. And we go through what, any problems, any issues, what's coming up. You know, we, we got to opine about what, how long the debt should be for the Nossat High School. I mean, we've worked together on so many issues over the years. This is the very first time that the school committee in my mind has made a unilateral decision without discussing it with anyone when it, it dramatically impacts us. This is not a minor impact for us. It's dramatic because it changes our practice suddenly and without any warning.
I would defer to Jerry's experience certainly. But, you know, you hire a attorney to represent your interests. And I'm not, you know, we haven't hired this attorney, the district has. So I would appreciate their expertise and their advice, but would always want to have my own expertise and advice to advise us as well.
Sure.
Yeah, well, you, you look, you hire a attorney, and this is where I kind of want to go. Is this against the law?
Right.
Is what the attorney is gonna look at? And if it's not against the law, then, yeah, it's okay, you go this way.
Right.
So, so I think we should have our, our town council take a quick look at that and.
Jerry?
Yeah.
Well, a couple of, a couple of things. So when this, the whole statutory thing, that came up at a school committee, okay, backing up, the existing agreement that we've gone under for the last twenty-five years, whatever, in the, in the agreement is the alternative method, just ratio, students per total enrollment. So that's, what people didn't realize until this agreement got opened up, was that in the alternate method, if one town votes against the budget, it goes down. In the statutory method, it's two-thirds. And that's why the school committee voted to go statutory. As far as I watched the meeting, I didn't go to that one. I watched it. That's the only reason they voted for the statutory.
Again, to my prior point.
Oh.
Why were you giving the power to the school committee when it's been the decision of each town?
And a lot of the.
In a year where there's a huge budget increase and we have a huge override.
Yeah.
Right. And a lot of the members of the school committee didn't know that that was gonna come up at that meeting for a vote and were surprised by it. And I don't think really understood.
So then why did it even, why did it?
Didn't have come up for a vote then.
The idea of it coming up for a vote?
The chairman just brought it up at the meeting.
Who's the chairperson?
It should have been on the agenda if they were gonna vote on it.
Who's the chairperson, Peter?
Chris Easley.
Chris Easley from, from Wellfleet.
Wellfleet.
You can't.
Because they had to get their budget out to the towns with the assessments. So they had to, they had to, if they, they realized the different, they finally realized there was a difference between the two methods, about one town can vote it down. And they wanted to get the budget out for this year. And they wanted to, or some of them wanted to.
But we've always, and just to be clear though, we've always had the ability for one town to vote it down.
Always.
But it's never happened.
Always.
But it's never happened. Right.
It's never happened.
Well.
And this is my, you know, my concern really isn't about the numbers of the methodology because over time, I think it's negligible in the scheme of things, honestly. But it creates a political issue.
Yes.
Yeah.
As soon as you introduce this, every year.
It's one town versus another.
Well, that's what, that's another thing that the vice chair of this committee said during, during that meeting was, she absolutely did not want the idea of it's gonna cost you this much under the alternative and this much under statutory. She wanted to go with one and stay with it and put it right into the agreement.
But that, but that's what they produced before, right?
Right. That's what we've done for the past thirty years.
They always produce the one, here's the two.
Alternative method.
And that's.
Alternative of methods. No.
And that's the nature of my
Yes.
feedback.
Yeah.
Is if we have a base level of participation, sharing over a base level, and, you know, we can all agree to that.
Yeah, twenty-five percent.
We don't have to be going back and forth every year, you know?
No.
I don't really think that the committee members have voted on it, fully understood the ramifications and exactly how it worked.
Mm-hmm.
But.
I'm sure.
I mean, people still may want, may think that the statutory is better just so that one town can't throw a monkey wrench into the whole thing. But, okay, my final point, and I'll, I'll sit back in my seat, is that, you know, this, this is just the first salvo. The, it's the town, it's the council that they hired to go through it, to try to bring it up to. But Brewster wrote a three-page letter, which I thought might have been in your packet, but it's not about, because the Brewster Finance Committee reached out to some, the four finance committees. And we had, we also had two meetings, I think, two or three, about the regional agreement. And they came, they had some ideas that they, they want to see in there. The little one pager you got that Tom McNamara wrote up for our committee was kind of in response to that. Basically just the, the three-year rolling average. I can't remember what the other big point was. Anyway, the, the school committee wants to take its time and hear from all the towns. At, I think it was at the last subcommittee meeting where they said they wanted to send the Brewster letter out to the four towns. So obviously haven't received it yet.
We did get an email from Peter Lombardi, didn't we?
From Pete, Peter, maybe? Yeah.
Peter.
And so I'm thinking that what might be a good way forward is to have a subcommittee or whatever it would be of Rich and somebody from the select board and somebody from the finance committee to look at this whole thing and, and see what the other towns are, you know, and get involved in the process. Because the, the school committee, I think, wants to have input from all the towns.
To Peter's.
And it's not gonna come to town meeting till a year from now.
To Peter's point, and I'm a strong advocate of this, it might put me at odds with some of the school folks. But I know they think this is their agreement, but it's not their agreement.
It's our agreement.
The four towns agreement.
Yes, it is.
The four towns need to participate and come to consensus and ensure that they can each pass it by town meeting, regardless of what the school committee or their council is telling them needs to be in it. It's almost beside the point because if it can't pass, it doesn't matter.
Right. Yeah, that's right. I mean, if it's bad news, we recommend to Eastham and not go. And if, if the town agrees with us, it doesn't happen. Because this has to be agreed by each town.
So we, I guess, long story short, is we need more engagement with this.
They weren't hoping to get this on this year's town.
No.
I was like.
But we have, we have on the warrant this year, I looked through a draft, we have the warrant this year, the alternative method is, is a warrant article on it this year.
No, so.
In our warrant draft so far?
You know, so this will be a topic of discussion when we get to probably the budget hearing next week or whenever that is. Right now, what we've included in the budget is the assessment as provided to us, which is on the statutory basis. And that's a point of discussion is do we want to provide, you know, we, I don't believe we're required to accept that. I mean, we could, if that, if we're required to accept what they're presenting to us, then we, we're not required to vote yes. And so we could vote, you know, we'll vote this with this method. The problem is, it causes a conundrum, as Peter indicated, because if that's our basis, it takes one person to say no.
One town.
One, one town, I should say.
And how many have to say no now? If, if we do the statutory method, is it two or three?
If you're mandated to do the statutory, would have to be two, would have to say no. But I don't, again, just because they said that's what they're assessing it at doesn't mean, in my opinion, that you gotta accept that.
Do you know which meeting, do you remember which meeting they had that discussion at?
Yeah, I want to.
Two twenty-nine.
Two twenty-nine. All right.
He's actually recording that one.
Twenty seventeen.
Good.
Oh, yeah, see if it was posted on the agenda.
Oof.
Ah, call to order.
Yeah, wow. Well.
Yeah, that's.
That was not put on their agenda for a vote.
It was not on the agenda.
No. And it should be specifically, it should have specifically been put on the agenda as something they would have voted on.
February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four sixteen.
This is a great example of a vague agenda.
Yeah.
The best, the best chair said, she was challenged with someone, somebody, and she said that legally it didn't have to be, didn't have to say on the agenda.
Didn't have to be on the agenda.
I don't know about that. I feel like I just went to an open mini law training and that was not the case.
Right?
Yeah.
Especially when you vote on it.
Especially when you vote.
It's one thing to talk about it, it's another thing to vote on.
So then.
So then it's not on the agenda, do we have any actions that we could take?
Well, even if it's on the agenda and this is their, I don't believe they have the power to tell us what methodology to use, whether it's on the agenda or not. So I think that's a question we gotta follow.
I think we should, we say, I think this needs to be addressed. I don't think we pretend like this didn't happen. I think this needs to be addressed.
No, so it's definitely an open discussion point for our budget discussions.
Yeah.
Boof.
It's too bad because we've gotten along for so long.
Oh, thank you.
I know. I was like, I thought we were like moving toward.
They used to call Eastham the sweet tunnel.
Do you have six o'clock?
Yeah, I'm changing, changing this a little bit. That one behind us is bad too. But, yeah, I. But, yeah, I-
Where are we?
I'm sorry I missed that in my review of this thing.
So what you're saying is, it's possible they don't have the power to make that call currently unless it's in state law, because it's not in the previous agreement?
Not in supporting documents either.
Well, okay.
There's nothing included in the supporting documents either to the agenda.
Well, then.
I can ask KP.
Whoa.
Let's step on, because we have to get this figured out quickly.
Yeah, because it's very late.
Yeah, because we're going to have to make a recommendation. I mean, the problem we have on the school budget is, it's a plebiscite, it's up or down, that's it, we don't have any ability to-
You do, but-
We do.
We don't have no time.
Again, that is, in, in our circumstance, our requirement for an override or other budget adjustments, the difference between methodologies is negligible, it's not influencing us too much one way or the other. But it's more the, the principle. Do you want to establish that precedent that this is what we're doing now?
And in the principle of it, I feel like we have a pretty decent relationship among the district of the four towns, and, you know, I don't necessarily want that to be open to a personality going one way or the other, and I would like something in place that continues to help us move along in a steady, even, sort of like reasonable, as you said, it's, it's either this year or that year, like, we know it's going to shift around, but I don't want, you know, I want an agreement that like-
We have the usual hurdles.
Yeah, and like, continues the harmoniousness, so that it doesn't open up for there to be a tit-for-tat.
We've always had respectful communication.
Yeah.
Hey, right, and I want to like, keep that, keep that going.
No, 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 you're good, I want to-
Go, Jer.
Jackie, if, if we go, if we go boom, right back to the committee, their knee-jerk reaction's going to be very defensive. Where are the other town managers, do we know where they stand on this, and do they look, the way Rich said it, Brewster is, would make out a little bit, I mean, but are they all in agreement that it shouldn't have happened this way?
Well, we have a town administrator in Wellfleet, who's temporary and has been there literally three weeks.
Yes.
So, you know, I'm not sure what his opinion is. Orleans, I haven't opined, I know Peter and I have both expressed shock and dismay.
Okay, that's, well, we're the, it may be, it, we want to send back that we're, we disagree, but it may be worthwhile to, for you to kind of discuss with, with the other town managers or administrators to see, because if we can have, if they show a united front, it's a very different approach to the school committee than just Eastham coming in and saying, this doesn't make it, we disagree with this.
Is it Amy Handel still, or who's our other?
Why wouldn't you want the statutory?
Moira.
Yeah, Moira's one of them, but who's our other?
Over sixty percent of their budget is schools, so they, so they could-
Come up to the mic, Peter.
I just, I think-
Has Peter seen the school budget yet?
The best ultimate setup might be the statutory, where one town can't vote down the whole school budget. Brewster's already up over sixty percent of their budget is schools, and, um, I think that, that the danger might be that Brewster, one year, might say, that's it, we've had it, we're paying too much for these schools, we're out, and, and the budget for the whole region goes down.
I think that's a valid point, Peter, but that's a town issue to figure out.
But you wouldn't want to-
I think the school committee is charged with approving and adopting a budget, they're not charged with determining the assessment method.
But don't you think, to Suzanne's point about predictability year after year, that you would want to, to set, to take, pick one method or the other and stay with it?
Right.
So you're not having this discussion every year.
So, Peter, that is a great point, but why did they do it in darkness without discussing it with anyone, and in a year where we are, we have just opened up the agreement and we've always done it one way? Wouldn't it be, as Mary said, wouldn't it be better to keep doing the way we're doing it, and then if we're going to change it, change it formally in the agreement? Like, why do a weird year where it's odd, it's just odd, and it doesn't, to me, it does not send a good message to the towns, because it's disrespectful to do it this way.
I think-
And if the statutory method's better, then the towns can all get together and say, okay, that's what we're doing.
The towns can decide.
Yeah.
My take is that they honestly, give them the benefit of the doubt, they were sort of surprised that they were supposed to be voting on this every year, and they never had. And, and also, they were surprised to learn that one town could vote down in the system that we had been using, so they, um-
But they had, they never have, and they never have because we've all gotten together and talked about it and had a strategy every year. So, they've broken something that was working, I think, that was working fairly well, and maybe they'll cause two towns to vote against their budget now.
Everybody, the, the understanding in the past has always been that if one town voted it down, they would still have to pay, I mean, the finance committee was told, that wasn't true. We were, we were operating under the alternative method, if one town voted it down, the whole thing, it would have gone down for everybody, so.
Oh, wow.
I don't know, it was, it's kind of a, part of its, just, you know, it's been a mess.
I think, um, the other, you know, and this is why it requires discussion, Peter, is because I hear what you're saying, and the current agreement does give rise to potential for some swings, but we can craft an agreement that minimizes swings, you know, minimum participation, a three-year rolling average, and minimize those increases or decreases in any one year. If you go all in on the statutory method, that is prone to swings as well, based on minimum state aid, your participation of your children, how many, your foundation budget for your children, whether you have special needs children, whether or not your children are low income versus higher income in other towns, all those factors can change, and state law can change, from any number of lobbying factions that have their own special interest in this. So, saying that maybe that's a better way, I don't think that's a given.
No, may not be. No, do you think it'll look, since going to the statutory method, if, uh, this year is going to impact Eastham, Eastham by adding fifty-one thousand dollars to the, if we put up a big fight against it, is it going to look like we're doing it to save fifty-one thousand dollars? And then, and then create some friction with the other towns, I don't know.
Is that the difference between the two methods, or do we even, that is?
This, this year, that's the difference.
Yeah, what if we voted the extra fifty-one thousand but said we want the other method? So we're putting, putting up our money.
There you go.
We're just, on principle, the, the method, you know?
Rather than the one point three.
Why would we? Why would we want the other, anyway?
All right, yeah, a lot to, well, we'll get, we'll get council's opinion on what-
Because it matters to us, it matters to us, Peter, it may not matter to you, but I'm telling you that it, it matters to us.
What matters to you?
Which method?
Which method?
The method and the openness.
Right.
And who gets to decide, and how we decide these huge issues, we should be deciding these huge issues together, period.
I get that point.
That is my problem, not the fifty-one thousand.
It's definitely not about the fifty-one thousand.
Not in this year, where that's a drop in the bucket.
So that's, that's kind of urgent, that we've got to figure out what method we're using for this year. Going forward, the future, what to do in the future, we, we have time, and maybe we can get a working group from the four towns together and work with the school committee and craft, craft the new regional agreement in the, in the next year.
Well, thank you. Thank you both for coming.
All right, we're going to move on to the draft warrant.
Yes, I like that.
No, wait, hold up, back up, guys, it says, one, two thousand twenty-three, two, it says Monday, May sixth.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
Everybody, draft.
I know, but is it Monday?
No.
The sixth, or Saturday, the sixth?
Yeah, it's, no, it's going to be, maybe, maybe Saturday, the eleventh, that's, that's-
That's what we're shooting for.
Can it not be Saturday, the eleventh?
It's not Saturday, eleven.
Oh, God.
Um, I have to work Brewster Town Meeting.
Is Brewster Town Meeting Saturday, the eleventh?
Is Saturday, the eleventh, May eleventh, at one P.M.
Well, if we have it ten-
Oh, yeah, we'll be done by then.
Trying to end my life early.
No, we can change it.
It's up to the selectmen by charter.
I know, I know, well, that's, that's, that's our, that's our next agenda item.
All right.
Okay, we'll start with location and then-
For now, but then we'll talk about location as our next agenda item.
Oh, okay, the date, sorry.
That's okay.
I just went straight to the panic of, what do you mean, what day?
And, yeah, I had the same reaction, like, I was circling things, and then I realized, oh, wait, this is draft.
If it's in red, it's not real.
Oh. Well, and even some of that isn't.
I know.
Yeah.
It's in red, it's not real.
She just didn't do, go far enough with the red.
Yeah, there's one thing-
I mean, it's just our first glance, really.
There's one thing in there that had your, something we signed, and you were, you were clerk, and you were the-
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you got to fix that.
Yeah, she'll, that'll all get fixed.
Honestly, I promise we're going to fix it.
But generally, budget and, you know, the big, the big things, I guess, really is what we're generally looking at, you don't even look at the summaries, because some of those are last year's.
Is two, two C, um-
Two C?
The police.
So that's the, okay, is that the new positions?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's got a provision in there, that's, that's got to be passed by-
The ballot, override.
Override, yeah.
Yep.
Six hundred fifty thousand.
Oh, that's fifty thousand.
Does that include OEB and all of that? That's a full-
And training and uniforms and a new car and all of that.
Yes, I understand, but it's just, it's got a full, full thirty-eight percent or whatever add on.
Anything specific, anyone? I did talk to Jackie a little bit about the, basically the land swaps with the seashore, and we'll be getting assessment, or appraisals.
Yeah, there's so many steps to that process, and one of them is that all the parcels that are being traded have to be appraised, and they have to have the same value, so.
Is that going to be ready for?
We have to put the ones that we want to trade on this year's, yes, because it's been so long, and we, we are using Nauset Lake Beach Road, so that is definitely, there are two parcels that we definitely want to have. And that's the only parcel that the seashore, we could find that has enough territory that the seashore wants. I was going to see if we could add the shoebox-sized piece of land that is behind the police station, that is directly adjacent to the Field of Dreams, so there's a, literally a shoebox that should connect to the Field of Dreams, right, that belongs to the National Seashore, and then beyond that, it's private property, and on the other side is the town. So that's a potential, I don't know how much land that is, but I don't think it's-
And what about that one across from the high school? That we had, under the parking area we kind of talked about?
That was ours, yeah.
It's on cable. But, I mean.
I thought we already owned that. We own the one that's directly across.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we owned it, yeah, we were going to put a potential parking that was-
That's right, I'm thinking that, yeah, I was thinking backwards, because we, we would want something else from them is what we would want, because that parcel we're giving up is pretty big.
Jackie, is there any, I know there's two, because I got approximate in value, right? Do we feel like they are approximate in value, or, the only thing I contemplated in the past is-
So the value, I, I haven't, I, we just, we sent this to John Giorgio, Shayna put in zero value, because the park is very clear that they will not give money, right? It's, so I don't want to put the value in there, because we have to come up with an assessment that's of equal value, so it can't, if it's not cash, then it's going to be more land, so if, as Amy's point is, if our three-acre parcel is worth more than the Salt Pond parcel combined with the Nauset Lake Beach Road parcel, then we will have to find another piece of land.
Well, that's kind of my point, could we add parcels to this authorization and say, these parcels, or any assortment of these parcels to, so that we have the flexibility and don't have to come back?
Oh, that's a great idea.
Yes, I think that is a great idea.
So that's one back here, that you mentioned, and maybe poke around, we, we had identified several.
Why, why are we doing this?
Was, near Hemingway?
Why are we doing this? We built a road on national park property, it's about seven years old now. So, they are losing patience, and they would like us to-
Do the land swap.
Do the land swap.
We haven't done that yet, we have to give them-
It's not our fault, they haven't really wanted to be there.
So that new road, that's seven years old already?
Behind Three Sisters.
Oh, wow, okay, so-
Well, since we started-
Two thousand sixteen, yeah.
Okay, so, uh-
So that's the urgency, and also the Shellfish Shack at Salt Pond is on their land, we own the shack, but it's on their land, so that's the other parcel that we're trying-
Okay, so-
It's adjacent to the town landing, it'll be really a good spot for us.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, by Hemingway, they own immediately south of Hemingway Landing, and I think it's just a little triangle.
The problem with those is trying to clear title for some of those triangles or parcels takes literally years, so it's better to find something that we've already either, that has a chain of title or something, and most of our woodlots don't, and we run into that.
But didn't, when the seashore took those lots, didn't they go through all that?
I don't know, because sometimes they take them the way we take them, where people just, you know. But I'll look at it.
Yeah, I don't know how big it is.
I don't know if it's an acquisition or disposition of these several votes, but maybe as a way to combine it so that, you know, an article, take, add soup or something and get rid of something, but whatever the mix of it is, has to be assessed at approximate value.
And this is so that we'll ultimately own the land that the road is on?
Yes.
A little swaparino, okay.
That's what's, that's what's moving forward.
I had a separate article question for five D on the short-term rentals, and I think this is a future agenda item, so maybe it doesn't need to be said, but if you go down to page, oh, there's no page number, if you go down, so the article is introduced here, go to the fourth page of the article, it says, protection for existing short-term rentals is the header.
Okay.
The last part, it says, if a property is bequeathed to a person or other beneficiary through a will, the new owner may continue to engage in short-term rental activities in accordance with this section. I thought the board was going to discuss the idea of legacy on this, and potentially limit it to a five-year or to the transfer of the property.
Maybe they're saving it for the public hearing, I don't know, I'll ask Paul.
Yeah, because that was something that we, at our last meeting, we, we were-
Good catch, Jamie.
That's in five D.
D, protection for existing.
Short-term rentals.
Yeah, I, I think it really should end with a period if, after is not renewed.
Right, exactly, and then the summary would have to be updated as well.
And again, it would not affect a whole lot of people.
Cottage.
Oh, yeah, the number of people, yes.
Yeah, it wouldn't affect a whole lot of number, it wouldn't affect a lot of number of people around town, and presumably, this would, um-
No, it's, it's actually not in the summary.
Oh, maybe I meant to-
It, in the summary, it just says, until the unit is transferred or conveyed and the certificate of registration is not renewed, period.
Hold on, where am I?
Oh, wait, no, yeah, if properties bequeath, you're right.
Yeah.
You're right, sorry, they, this has more in it, had a little bit more, so I didn't think it was, uh-
In the summary.
The three or more short-term rentals. All right, and Jackie and I had talked a little bit about, there were questions from, I think, Climate Action, about presenting the stretch energy code.
Yeah, I, I talked to them.
Oh, you did?
And said, "Very, very, very short, brief, and be available to answer some questions in case they come around," and I, and I hope so. And I think, because I told them that you have the authority to.
Oh, the moderator.
This, at the, oh, the, a public hearing is the moderator?
Sorry, I'm talking about town meeting.
Oh, town meeting. I didn't talk to them about town meeting. We can, let's wait till after the.
Okay.
Twenty-fifth to see how it goes before we decide.
Gotcha, gotcha. 'Cause I was gonna talk about the pesticide one, too, but that doesn't need a public hearing.
No.
But same thing, really, the moderator should talk to her about.
Yeah.
How much time she gets, and, but I think we should let her, Laura, do it.
Ye- yes, yes. They, they did.
It's kinda her baby.
All the work on that, yeah. One, one, I have a question for Jackie and Rich. On the, 2A, on the budget, there's only, all we have is a line for Nauset Regional Schools. So. Now, if we want, that's line thirty. So if we have an issue with that coming up, at the town meeting, it's up or down on line thirty. Can't really modify that, so.
You could modify it with the motion. So I would intis, so, not reflected in this article is a lot of discussion points that we gotta have, probably on the, the budget hearing, or, you know, in advance, or two, however you wanna do it, but. As presented, the budget, that level of budget, we can't fund with our property tax levy. So there will be, you know, unless you want me to hold back, Jackie, tell me, or wink at me, or whatever. Basically, at the moment, this motion would be, for that level budget, would be a $1.2 million override, entirely for the school budgets. Our budget comes within our levy limit. The 1.2 represents the excess of the amount we provided, three percent, and the amount's in excess of that three percent. So. For our finance committee, which I'll be briefing on Wednesday, in advance of the budget hearing, how do we approach a $1.2 million override? In most circumstances, you have contingent budgets. What if that override doesn't pass? Because, based on our earlier discussion, we're beholden to fund the school budget request, assessments, which means we'd have to cut our own budget. $1.2 million would be substantial cut in our services. And so our alternative at the moment is a small amount of reduction that we've kind of laid out, which would not be entirely impactful to our, but, our operation we could handle. And replacing the property tax revenue that would not get raised with unused short-term rental receipts. We have not used short-term rental receipts for the operating budget intentionally, but that would allow us to go appropriate a certain level of budget without it being contingent upon passing an override.
But it would mean if we accept wastewater, that.
But it, and it's very impactful, you know, the, the small amount of reductions that we've gotta make in our, this year's budget to accommodate that, we can handle that. But it would be very impactful to how we're funding wastewater. And, for example, in, in not funding the override is actually negligible with the change, because all the debt for wastewater that is now being funded by short-term rentals would no longer be funded by short-term rentals, because the exempt debt would have to get added to the levy. And that should free up the short-term rental for the operating budget, which, as you all know, is a one-time, is a one-time fix.
Shocking.
Yeah, it's a one-time, it just pushes it.
But it's a forever decision. If you make that decision, if town meeting makes that decision, it's forever. We can never get it back without doing another override to get that million and a half back, yes. So I'm gonna propose a third option, too.
That would be nice.
But I haven't, I haven't thought about, I mean, I haven't finished it yet, but.
Oh.
That's why we weren't gonna talk about it tonight, because we're not done, but, you know.
That's fine.
Can I ask a question? Does the 1.2, Rich, include any monies in that? Is that just education? Or does it include any monies regarding the police request?
Just, everything, and 2A excludes the police request. The police is a totally separate article at 2C.
And it stays?
The six fifty.
I might lower it to six.
It'll be 1.85 total.
No, it's, it's not.
Plus more, okay, never mind.
1.88.
We're fine.
All right, it's not filed yet.
We'll see the numbers when we finally see it, when you're ready.
All right, everyone have a good look at the, at the warrant?
I had a look.
All right, let's talk about town meeting, location.
Exactly.
Good luck.
Yes, location.
Location, location, location. So we had, you know, talked about, we had the warrant article last year to be able to have town meeting in another town. But then, I don't know, Jackie thought about it, and we can.
I don't, I mean, I think it's really, I know that for you guys, it's a decision, you know? But for us, it's operationalizing that decision for one year in a new location that we don't know is gonna be effective, on a year that we may have two overrides. Like, you know, we can't fit, you know, people in the same room, so then we might have to have two rooms at the. So I started to think about it, and Adam Bohannon just, I mean, he hates the idea of, we'll have to hire the Orleans Police Department to cover our town meeting. I mean, just the logistics of it just start to add up. And we've gotten really, as Adam said, you know, we've gotten really good at the field. We can do it for one more year. It's only one more year. And yes, it might be cold, it might be rainy, we might have to postpone, and we might have to have a rain date or whatever, but, you know. So that's where we kinda went full circle, back to.
I love the field. It finally gives me the opportunity to wear a big hat, which I've forgotten the last. I endorse the field.
I like how he pulled the Cert team in, give us a job our first.
But if the 11th is problematic, I mean, we did it on the 6th last year, so we could pull it back to the 4th. It's just colder, you know, that's, the, the chances of May 4th.
May the 4th be with you?
Ooh, fun.
I like it.
Star Wars themed?
I have Star Wars pants.
But we can see if we can get the tents and the electronic voting and everything on the 4th.
All right. I would appreciate that.
Or we can move it out to the 18th.
When's the town election?
The 21st.
Okay, you couldn't do it the.
Both of them work.
Yeah, I would super appreciate.
We could do a rain date.
On the 18th.
Rain date.
Well, let me, if, if you don't mind, can I just check with electronic voting and the tent and chair people?
On those two dates by them?
There are weddings on May 11th. I just found that out today.
Shocking, there's weddings on May 11th.
They're anxious, they wanna give away our tents.
Does Brewster have electronic voting?
No.
No, no, there's counters. There's little tags, and they raise them.
And they've had a couple of really big ones lately, too, so.
And this one is gonna be, also be quite large, and probably quite long, and it starts at 1, and I need to be there.
What's the big deal on Brewster this year?
The Sea Camps Plan, and then also citizens petition on short-term rentals, probably. Yeah, but so I, you know, if we could not do it on the same day, that'd be really great.
Okay.
I would super appreciate it.
All right, let me see which is the best, and then we'll vote finally on the 20th or the 25th.
Or the 18th.
I mean, you could have two themes, you have.
Well, as, as Rich said, we could always have the 18th be the rain date.
That's true, right.
If they're available.
I'd love a Star Wars theme, though.
We're gonna need the 4th with us this year.
Right up your alley, Jamie, right up there.
I'm just asking, what, what's the final, what's the final decision made 4th, is what you're?
No, the final decision is that I have to find out tomorrow, you know, this, I have to find out whether we can get the electronic voting people and the tent and table people for either the 4th or the 18th.
So we'll decide on the 25th?
Yeah.
Okay, that'll be our first order of business.
Yeah, before the public hearing.
Yeah, we're starting at 4:30 on that.
Well, 'cause the dog thing.
We are at 4:30, but that's got the.
Dog, yeah, all right. All right, new upcoming agenda, I think we can gloss over that for right now. We have a lot, enough on our plate.
What about no mow May?
No mow.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I had the old agenda here, no mow May.
Oh, no mow May.
So the, the recommend, the ask from the, the gentleman that sent the letter was, at least wait till the mid-May to mow for town.
I think that's a great idea. I have a neighbor that, they put little signs out, too, that, like, let people know why. You know, I mean.
This would just be, this is what we say, it's not any enforcement.
Well, but we do town properties, too.
It's town properties.
Town properties.
Oh, it's town properties.
Yeah.
Sorry, Jackie, Jackie's like, whoa, 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 whoa.
No, I'm just thinking, do we have anything in May that we don't wanna have kids get ticks and stuff?
When does, when does the Little League start?
Yeah, they, oh, we have to mow the fields.
Or the bees.
Field of Dreams.
Well, I'm sorry, but, you know, we can't not use the field for a whole month.
Yeah.
Shoot.
Maybe we could try to do other properties in town?
Is it an official policy, or just like, in the spirit of it?
It's in the spirit of, but, you know.
And to encourage other people.
You can mow on April 30th.
Should send a.
I promise I will not mow my lawn.
Yeah, we'll mow April 30th.
They don't have one, I just mow weeds when this happens. I don't grow the lawn.
April 30th and then May 15th.
Yeah.
And I think the big thing is Christine with the fields.
That'll be, yeah.
Getting it ready for the spring moments.
You know, really, I can't stress Christine out more.
I, we're not, no, no, no.
If you're watching.
You're fine, Christine, don't worry. Yeah, that might be nice, and then put a little sign out.
'Cause I don't think we have any craft fairs or anything in May. I think those are.
It might be nice to, yeah, do something with the sign up, so people understand, and that way, it kinda educates people a little bit. And we could even include it in a blast.
Could we put a banner up?
Mow in there?
I don't know if we could get a banner in time.
I would talk to John about the grounds and mowing.
Yeah.
I know, you got your notepads full.
I know.
I'll look to see if I can find those little no-mow signs.
Got little stars everywhere.
'Cause, you know, the, across from where they put the, the windmill?
Yard signs for free.
Where it's usually like summer concert.
Oh, right, the, my signpost.
Yeah.
Your signpost, yeah, I didn't know if that could, I don't know if a no mow May banner would be appropriate.
Invertebrate Conservation Society has a free printable sign.
Nice.
All right, town managers' report.
I don't, I don't have a written one, I'm sorry, but I do have a couple of items, and they're on my, here. Just some things that we're gonna need to discuss in the next few meetings. One is, the state has passed a good law, good landlord tax exemption, which is a property tax exemption for people who rent year-round. We still have time to add that to the warrant, if you want to. However, it, it goes, it, it, it allows the board to set a policy to give people a tax break if they rent to someone year-round who is 200% of AMI or less. So it gives a higher threshold, and we'd need to just accept it at town meeting, accept the statute at town meeting, and then we'd have to develop policies for it.
Yes.
We also need to update our policy on the Timothy Smith loans. I got a memo from the treasurer's office, and I think there's just some things that that policy is a little old and needs to be.
That's when I was first to the board, I think, I think it was probably '08.
Updated, right, yes. Yeah, something like that. And then I have been discussing, as you can imagine, with, I've been discussing the short-term rental tax registration increase with quite a few taxpayers. And a couple of them have brought, I think, fairly legitimate issues. One of which is, I'm trying to get, I, I've gotten a legal opinion from Calhoun and Page that we can't do one of them, because it's not legal under federal law, not state law, but federal law. It's the first time I've ever tried to break federal law. But the other one is, I'll, we'll just bring it back to you, but it's basically people who are, who are saying to me, you know, why are you charging the same fee, whether we have a studio with no kitchen, that we rent like a little motel room versus, for $140 a night, versus someone who has $11,000 a week?
So we should charge more for the $11,000.
Shouldn't we have some tiers, is what they're saying, so.
Developing some tiers?
I think we could look at that one.
Sure.
Or they could always switch to year-round.
Please make it as simple as possible.
Yes.
Big, maybe big buckets, two by square footage, something.
Well, no, I was thinking, like, if you're a studio or one-bedroom, you have one rate. If you're a two-bedroom and above, you have another rate.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah, see, even more simple, even more simple.
That's what, I mean, I'm not, I have my bottom already. I think the bottom is there, so, but anyway.
Well, I tried to, I suggested we have, if like a year-round person rents out their house for two months in the summer, to be able to keep it, shouldn't they pay the lower rate, but that's one thing you can't.
That's illegal under federal law.
Right, and I did hear that from a few people, too, and it was a valid concern, and it was something I wish we could.
I know.
Execute better.
Maybe we could use the community fund to subsidize there.
We could.
If they wanted to apply as a year-round.
Well, I don't know if we could use the community fund, but I'm sure you could vote something.
Yeah, maybe we could, as the town could subsidize.
We can't use taxpayer money to do that.
The same idea of subsidizing, yeah.
We could, we could work a fee waiver into it, but it can't be just based on that.
Do you want me to update the community fund?
Again?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
So we've had some issues with the community fund.
Lot of issues with the community.
It's got held up with Senate counsel, raised some legitimate issues, which I thought, back in the day, when we first started this, that we would have, but nobody mentioned them, so I thought we were home free. But it has to do with the anti-age amendment of the Constitution, you can't provide private benefit, blah, blah, blah. So they needed it fine-tuned, and so they offered the opportunity for us to rewrite it.
Yeah, that's good.
And there's existing legislation in Harwich that allows us to, it's very specific to providing benefit to taxpayers.
Okay.
It's through the assessment processor, so we, I wrote it pretty much the same as that, but saying it's by a decision of the select board, and then the, the other addition, which isn't a change, it's just keeping our original intent of, we wanted this to be a separate fund, so that we can appropriate money into it, as opposed to being part of our overlay in our assessing process. So the big discuss, point now, I think, as it's rewritten, it will be good. It's just a question of, do we need to re-vote it, because it's changed verbiage enough that it changed the overall intent and have to go through the process again? We're hoping to hear back that Senate counsel says it's still within the original intent of what was authorized, and we need an approval, but just the select board, not the.
It might be good to bring it back to the board for a vote.
But probably we'll come back to the select board.
Oh, it has to.
Okay.
At a minimum.
For the changed.
Okay.
It just, hopefully, it doesn't have to go all the way back to.
Oh, to them, oh, I see, I see, I see.
No, to a town meeting.
Oh, oh.
Because if it's just a select board acceptance.
It's substantial change, they might say, it has to go back.
And then it has to restart the whole process, where if the select board can just approve the changes as made, it can continue down the legislation.
Good luck.
Saga of the community fund, it's almost like the Charter.
Yeah. Maybe even worse.
Yeah. All right, minutes. I had one little correction in the minutes. The, about moving the, um, meeting, not meeting, the voting times. She put in that, asked to reduce voting hours due to turnout with early voting, has nothing to do with early voting, has to do with mail-in ballots. 'Cause we don't have early voting for town election. It's just, you need to do the mail-in ballots, not, it's, she wrote turnout with early voting, it's really mail-in ballots.
Mail-in ballots.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with that change.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four to zero.
No other.
And with that, any other business?
No.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
I adjourn.